We'll call tonight's meeting with Lloyd's City Council to order. Mandy, would you take roll call, please?
Raymond Ponto.
Present.
Lloyd Lutrell.
Present.
Kent Miller.
Present.
Lee McMillan.
Here.
Tony Gingler.
Yes.
Andrew Grabon.
Present.
Matt Adi.
Here.
Thank you. If you'd stand with me for communication. Having the Father, thank you for giving us the guidance for making the best decisions for our community and thank you for all the blessings you put on our community and our state and our nation as we move forward with a new President-elect coming in and changes in our communities and benefit for all of the public and as always be with our youth of our communities if they represent us around the state and around the country and also be with our local law enforcement as they do the job of protecting us locally and being with our law enforcement as they protect us here and around the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No points for being late, Dave.
What? What? I've been here the whole time.
I'm sorry I didn't see you next to Chad.
That's right. You see him, he's like all hiding and stuff and Chad's a, he's a pig.
He's in his camera.
We were standing out there praying this week.
Yeah. No difficulty. Yeah, some of us need that. Lloyd, do you have anything to say?
At this time, I do not, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you.
The city's done a nice job decorating the community.
Really much nice. Our life, those only new lives, it's really, pretty impressive. Lee?
I do not.
Raymond?
I have nothing, thank you.
Tony?
I have nothing.
Andrew?
Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Great tone you're, it's like we're gonna skip over Katie this evening.
She'll be here, we're just, basketball game, so.
Hey, that's, that's great, she's able to be there. Jason, do you have anything for us this time?
Um, yeah, I guess I'll give you guys a little bit of an update, just beginning here while we have citizens here as well, but the pilot testing is still going on at Glen Elver, um, kinda like I reported last time, they're getting really good end product, um, coming out of reverse osmosis, even I was talking to John even today, saying that, you know, in the winter months, obviously the water's even clearer and cleaner and it's a shame you even have to hit it with chlorine, it's coming out so clean, but they figured they could do a few less processes and that might be a good benchmark that cheaper produced water even in the winter because there might have to be some processes we don't have to do if we weren't able to use this type of plant for final solutions, so just it is kinda interesting this way, so I just pray that these little heaters work here the next few days and they work on some of the smaller pipes and they're, he's probably, he said he's probably got about two weeks left of data collection and making sure that KDHE has everything they need to kinda help make, you know, decisions that would clear that test. Um, on the TH, the TTHM issue, which, you know, obviously the letter went out, it's been going out since, I did a little research since 2014, um, had talked to Dan Clare at KDHE a couple times today and to John Brummer, there's a little bit of a disconnect and some frustration from KDHE on our submittals, but, um, talked with John, with Truck Design and kinda, we kinda developed an ultimatum that we needed to get this next submission right, otherwise we're gonna, I'm afraid we're gonna wear our welcome type of scenario, so, um, so there was about 20 different items that KDHE was requesting for clarification and corrections, so, um, I had one, I told them, you know, let's go through it twice and do it right here so that we can, uh, get, you know, get that process corrected so we no longer have to send out those letters and distribute waters that meet that threshold, so, um, the, uh, yeah, otherwise that's about all I had, I put a, sent a little addition, just kind of a report, I'll keep adding to as we go, to kinda track of what we've done and what I've kinda got on the radar, so if there's any questions or comments, I guess I'll answer right now.
Okay, thank you. I wanna bring to everyone's attention, I forgot too early, but we have a revised agenda this evening and we have no formal actions is what the changes to the agenda, I just wanted to let everyone know that. Next item on the agenda is a report from our Police Chief, Mr. Evil.
Um, yeah, this is like the first one of his, trying to kinda fill my way out, but the only thing we really got going on this week is our two young lads that we just hired, Casey Hayne, Matthew Siemens, uh, they both go to the academy January 15th, uh, they passed all their testing, so they'll be full-time employees after they graduate the academy. So I just wanted to introduce them to you guys, cause we, it's typically what I do for my department, um, but these are the, Casey, actually, he and his wife are both from here, um, and they just moved back here. Matt and his wife have already been living here for the last two months, she has a job at the hospital here, um, so he's come to us from the state correctional institutions there, so we think we're in a good spot, so, thank you for your time.
Okay, welcome aboard, John.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next one.
It is Casey's birthday, in case anybody wants to see him, um, so it's a good night for him, look at him, he's embarrassed. We're alright, we're alright.
Chief, would you give him a hug for him?
Sure. Happy birthday.
From the heart.
He says he wants you going for a beer later.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda this evening is our community development report from Heather, who's always has an interesting report.
I know, I got lots of stuff. Are we doing neighborhood revitalization?
We like.
Yep, yep. No.
Then go ahead.
Just a little bit. Uh, I was just gonna probably inform you that it is time again to renew neighborhood revitalization, so believe it or not, we are, we are ready to do that. Um, I just have a few numbers and we'll put it on the formal agenda on the 20th, but I thought I'd give you some time if you had any questions, um, that you can answer, I can answer some questions about it. Um, we are just a little bit over 10 years in the neighborhood revitalization, we started in June of 2006, we have completed 316 total projects, um, we have 179 residential projects for total receipts of 23.9 million, we have 82 commercial projects for receipts of a little over 37 million, and we have 55 ag projects for a little bit over 4 million. Uh, we have several projects that didn't participate in neighborhood revitalization, um, that we think add up to about 27 million, um, people, we have some that took advantage of industrial revenue bonds and then we just have several that didn't participate at all. So we have total capital improvements in a little over 10 years of just over $92 million, so it's pretty significant. Um, I know that it probably isn't all due to neighborhood revitalization, but I know it plays a very big part of it. Uh, our valuations for our county have definitely grown, 2006 we were, um, total valuation of a little over 55 million and by 2016, uh, this year we're at 79 million, so, um, we have not made any changes, we just made a couple of small clerical changes to the plan, um, but just like normal, it's a 10-year plan, the first year has a rebate of 95% and then it sunsets out, so second year's 90, all the way down to the 10th year, um, you get a rebate of 10% back. We did increase application fees, um, a little bit, so that was what we did last time around, so this all stayed the same. And then the only other thing that we changed this time was qualified improvements on new construction, um, our only, we only submit one application for a project, so say you're gonna build a house and then you decided the last minute you wanna put a garage on, you can't come back and ask for the garage, so it just keeps everything clearly a lot easier with the courthouse, but. Love to answer any questions if you have any questions about it.
If a citizen is interested in applying for that, where do they go?
Courthouse. It all starts at that Fraser's office and it's still public, so it gets approved through the county commissioners and that's always on the record in the media, um, they approve those every month. They call me if you have questions about it, cause I love to answer questions about it.
Heather, thank you for your conference.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. You did a good job.
Good. Uh, one more thing, I moved, I moved my office, so I am now located over there at the courthouse, we're in the old coffee shop, the Chamber and IR, um, we are having a chamber of coffee with the courthouse on Friday, so if you have time on Friday, come over and have a cup of coffee and see our new digs, uh, from 9:00 to 10:30 on Friday morning. And then the courthouse is part of the home tour this, uh, this Sunday, uh, Mitchell County really liked the live home tour, so the lobby looks gorgeous and Kevin's got his apartment all set up upstairs, he has snacks, and he's a great cook, so if you haven't come over, at least come over and have some of his, um, I think he's got quiche, proprietary quiche is what he called it, so he does not give out the recipe. Uh, and I do have a new website, MitchellCountyKansas.com, um, you can check it out, it's got city information, it's got all of our communities on it, um, it's not completely all okay right now, but it is live, so you can go look at it, there's still a few typos in there we're working on, um, but it has updated news and things that we're doing, it'll have neighborhood revitalization on it, um, any other projects or things that we have going on, we'll put it up there. Okay, I'll share questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for levying assessments for 10th Street improvement, payment on 10th Street, we'll open that up to the public, is there any questions or comments from anyone?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, uh, I'm, you know, I'm wondering how the payment schedule is working on that, or, you know, how the, you know, the, the letter we got was showing how that was divided up amongst the residents adjoining the street there or whatever, um, I don't know, it looked like there were some names missing off of, off of that to me, I don't know.
Jason, can you respond to that?
Um, yeah.
I didn't see a red building on there.
Well, that's Ziver.
I guess on the original, yeah, on the original one, and I'll have some background information while I remain to hear a little bit, um, but I thought that there was, was there eight properties on that? Katie, thanks for answering right now.
Katie, what about it, how do you provide to edit properties?
Yeah, they were questioning if all the property owners that were part of that are still on that as far as the dividing of that.
Yes, it's the same as what was in the resolution that we passed a couple years ago. Yeah.
I don't know, I'm, I'm just really not up to speed on the whole deal, you know, we brought, bought the property.
In January.
In January, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, evidently there was a petition to have that street redone.
Yeah, previous owners, yeah, had signed that.
Okay, yeah, they, I was not aware, was not aware of that, I just got the bill for $11,000, I didn't have any, uh, information to go on with it, so, I guess basically we're here to just.
Get some information on it.
Yeah.
Well, we're kinda wondering why the people in that little cul-de-sac weren't included, because, I mean, they need that road to get into their properties, we don't even use it.
Right.
Our house isn't even off of that road, it's.
Well, our drive, our driveway comes off of Poplar Street, you know, I mean, alley access is off of 10th, but.
Why was that street put in?
It was petitioned in.
By who?
By the property owners that were on that street.
There's gotta be so many people.
I could ask.
51%, 51%, and I believe.
What was it?
Um, we had all the two signatures, I believe, um, for that, and as part of the petition is, is petitioned as to who will be assessed and how that will be assessed, and then the resolution came before you guys, um, kinda laying that out, um, and as to why the cul-de-sac, I don't have an answer to that, other than I assume that they paid for that, that development was paid for by that developer.
That was a different project.
Different.
It is the policy of the city that we have, everybody that has property adjoining the street from where it starts to where it ends, if it's petitioned that they're gonna, they're gonna contribute to their percentage of the curb coverage, correct?
Correct.
So everybody from Walnut to Poplar on 10th Street is benefiting from that street, and so that's how.
So in other words, if the, if the two people didn't want it, has no say-so whatsoever?
Correct.
Yeah, once it's over the majority, then you're in.
I asked a city employee one time, he says, why is that street going, going in there? And he says, well, somebody's complaining, they're getting mud on their tires.
Yeah.
So in other words, we gotta, we gotta pay for something they want because they got mud on their tires.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's the way, well, fortunately or unfortunately, that's the way the petition process works, and that's why it was explained to me, is once you get over the 50% of the property owners on there, then they can push it through. I'd say probably the answer for the court versus the street is, you know, they kinda said they probably purchased that as part of their lot price, and so, you know, their street's paid, and, you know, I think the street before it obviously was gravel, from my understanding, so.
I didn't even need that street.
Yeah.
I don't need it.
Yeah.
Now, it's gonna create hardship on me, big time.
What is the, I guess, you know, do you guys have a copy of the document that was mailed out to all, to the people that were liable for their portion of the street?
The initial one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I only, we only received one as part of the mail.
It was just, I, I got a petition, um, a copy of one with the resolution, and.
Okay. Well, basically, I mean, what we received in the mail is a list of all of the people liable for their portion of the street, and there was no real, I mean, like, net 30 due on receipt, or like payment plans, or?
That comes after tonight.
Okay.
There's a statutory process that we, we have to go through, and after tonight, once the ordinance is approved, that actually formalizes who pays what, and then you get another letter and it says, it asks you to pay within 30 days, and if you don't, then it will be assessed on your taxes for the next 10 years at 6%. Um, now, obviously, next year's taxes are a long ways from now, so it, the letter will say 30 days, if you wanna pay the first of the year, it's not gonna be on your tax, I mean, we'll give you some time there, I don't put them on, I, Mandy and I send over taxes in the first of October, and then they will be on your, the statement that you receive next year, um, with interest. So you have the choice of whether you want to, um, pay it through the tax process every, for 10 years, if you want to, um, you know, 6% is.
6% APR.
If you, if you, if I like, you can get something better than 6% somewhere else, maybe you wanna go borrow the money somewhere else, um, that's completely up to you on how you wanna do it, but.
It's gonna be stretched out to 10 years?
Uh-huh.
Or not 20?
Again, it's a petition process, and that's, that's what was petitioned and what was.
Didn't get a phone call, nobody knocked on my door, nobody sent me a letter that the street was going in, that's why I talked to that city employee.
I, I, I don't know what to tell, I mean, it was, we had public meetings about it, we had a hearing and a resolution and.
For people that afford to live over there, affordable housing, they call it, they wanted it, it's not fair for us poor property owners, papers up, that they want it, so they're not gonna be my friends or my neighbors from now on.
Um, so anyways, the, uh, what the cost estimate, for a little background for you guys and for everybody, it was about $87,000 some odd dollars for that, and basically the way the city does that, for a little bit of background, is they'll pay for the materials and the, I'm sorry, that cost is the materials and the engineering to, to, to put in the road and to get it correct, including like storm sewer and things like that, um, and then the, the labor and the equipment costs is obviously just paid throughout large through your, your normal taxes and just through citywide, so there is expense, but on the flip side, it makes it a little bit more affordable as far as what that street would actually cost if they were to charge you the full, the full thing, um, and I think the estimated labor and equipment for, for putting that in over those few months, you know, with everybody out there, was, you know, around $100,000, you know, so if you were to bid that out, you know, it'd probably be that cost of, if not more, to, to put that street in, um, so what actually, what it actually came out to was about 90,500, so we were within about 2% or so of what, what the engineer's estimate was on that, and that's just typical, you know, if you rip into something, every once in a while there's a few surprises, and there was a little bit of, a few surprises in there that cost a little bit more.
Yeah, I think the total balance, it was like 100, 101,000 or something, divided up.
Well, it should've been, it was eight people, so it should've been 90,504 bucks is what it should've been, it should, is what it should tabulate out to.
How many people?
Among eight people, eight property owners.
Eight, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, we, we came in, you know, we, we knew that the, the street deal was happening, but, you know, we were not.
They said, they said maybe.
Yeah, yeah, we, we didn't, uh, we're not aware of the petition or, or any of that, and I don't know how that reads, you know, I don't know if there's any kind of stipulation about property values or any kind of relative.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, there should be a property disclosure or something to go along with that through your Realtor that should make you aware of ongoing liens or things like that, I mean.
The resolution, which approves the project, everything is filed with a register of deeds, so, and everything that affects your property.
So that should've been caught in your title or for your abstracting, I would assume, so.
Yeah, I'm guessing that. It wasn't a huge talking point.
Exactly, it's stuff that unfortunately people don't always catch, you know, like easements, those types of things, and it's a bummer sometimes, but.
I know, your former owner signed the petition, so they.
Right.
Probably told you that as well, but.
Yeah, no, they didn't, but, whatever.
Yeah.
But there's no contingencies on, I, I'm not sure how it all works, there's not, it's not a property value-based assessment or anything.
As far as this, no, is you, is a, I guess, I don't know what exactly you, you got there and I saw it.
Well, I mean, it's always, it's the.
11,000 each.
Right, right, it's equal, equal portions.
Yep.
So, I mean, if you had a lot sitting there with nothing on it, you know.
It's still big.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Where does this, so you're, you're dividing this 90,504 between eight?
Correct.
Is that what you're telling me?
Yep.
And so where is this 39244 petition, or what's that number?
That's, I think Jason calculated the increase over that estimate.
Yeah, so the estimated cost is like 87,000 something.
Oh, that's all that is.
Yeah.
And then how is that assessed then? Is it by, so you can, so basically they can finance it out?
They can pay in.
For up to 10 years?
Yep, they can pay in full, or they can, um, essentially, like you said, finance it for 10 years and pay it with their general taxes.
Okay, thank you. Just want Claire to make sure I knew what I was talking about.
People do it both ways, some people like to pay it and maybe borrow the money somewhere else, and some people use, use our mechanism as a.
It's fairly common from my understanding of the say, I mean, we've done quite a few of these petitions, so.
How much is it gonna be?
11, 11,000 whatever.
11,000?
Yeah.
For all of us?
Yeah.
For the eight.
For the eight on the list.
How do we pay that?
So you can either pay it upfront, you know, you get an invoice for it, or if it's not paid within, you know, the terms of the invoice, then it'll be automatically assessed to your property taxes, so it'll just be tacked on, but broken up over the 10-year period, but, but with a 6% interest rate charge, so there'll be some additional cost, so, you know, the annual would be 942.75, $942.75, but obviously there's gonna be that 6% on there, so it'll be a little bit more than that, but, so roughly, you know, probably a thousand dollars a year.
Probably a little more, it'd be 11.
Probably around 1,200.
About 1,200 with interest, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
How much?
With your interest, it's gonna be around 1,200.
Yeah, I missed one.
A year?
Yeah, and, and the way the interest is calculated, you, um, that number goes down every year, your interest amount goes down that you're paying.
Anybody wanna buy a house?
Okay. We're in the street.
You might get it anyway.
We'll now close our public hearing, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and we have the proper minutes in front of us, uh, there was a little wording, uh, issue, and it should've, it was provided by property owners, not by the city, so you have the correct.
That was on the CDG, on the grant, the $400,000, it's about midway through.
About midway through. So that was the, we talked, the cost that happened.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment, we request the consent agenda, we're interested in the direction this week.
Okay, do I have a second? Motion made by Councilman, we approve the amended, uh, meeting with the wording, uh, provided by the property owners, and it was seconded by Councilman Miller, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
McMillan?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Lutrell?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances, ordinance 2197, levying assessments for 10th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance 2197.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been, a motion was made by Councilman Adi that we approve ordinance 2197, levying assessments for 10th Street, it was seconded by Councilman Ponto, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Gingler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Lutrell?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Adi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is resolution 201619, an E-Waste Agreement with REV E3, uh, is there any questions for the, on this resolution?
Uh, data destruction and the fees there, what is that?
That would be if, that would be just strictly an add-on, if we had some proprietary information or, I don't know, probably not the best word, private information or something that have people's personal information on there, if we wanted them to actually destroy it, you know, just hitting delete, cause you hit delete, it doesn't just, it doesn't really.
It's still there, I understand.
So they'll do a series, they're certified, they'll do a series of, you know, I guess, Tony can talk to the ones and zeros to actually clear it and.
Yes, we would basically wipe it with some software first, and if, if the person didn't want us to try to resell or refurbish the hard drive, what we would do is just basically shatter the plates in the hard drive, so it physically destroyed the, the platters.
Okay, and what?
And it'd be $15 a hard drive, but.
Okay, there we go, there's no cost there.
The more that you do, the less it gets, so that's basically how it works.
So it's a $15 charge to either destroy or, or delete the information within the hard drive, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's in writing somewhere along the lines?
Yes.
Okay, cause it, I mean, it's not here in mind.
Yeah.
I just see a $20 fee for a CRT disposal.
Yeah, he had, they, um, he has, they have a tiered cost structure, and, and the reason I didn't specifically put that in there is because it might change, they might decide it, it's gonna charge, it's gonna take $20, or it's gonna take $10, so I didn't wanna lock the city into, they're just gonna charge us what they charge everybody else for the same service.
It would be in the contract, it'd be in the pricing, you know, which.
I didn't know what they was.
I understand, yeah, they should've.
Yeah, they have a price.
Made that clear, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And what are we currently doing? There's nothing, just holding it to the.
Yeah, nothing at this point, and, and not everything we have has personal information, but we also probably have computers with, you know, payroll information and social security numbers and that kinda stuff, so there probably would be things that we would say, hey, that one, we, you know, we're not gonna have mass quantities of it, but, excuse me, for the we're not gonna have mass quantities of it, but, excuse me, for the one, two, or three that we have, it'd be worth the fifteen or twenty bucks to make sure it was light. Yeah, great question and.
Is there any other questions? I entertain a motion for approval. So it's been moved by Councilman Lucell, but we approve Resolution twenty-sixteen nineteen, the e-waste service agreement with Rev. E-three, have a second?
Second.
Who's that? It's seconded by Andrew. Okay, no further discussion? No further discussion, Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Audi?
Yes.
Grayvon?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Lucell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ponte?
Yes.
McMillan?
I won't vote because of conflict of interest.
Okay, motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is Resolution twenty-sixteen twenty, the Heizer Road Solid Waste Contract for Collection Services, Heizer Trash Services. Any questions for that?